This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
And at 6 o'clock, I'm calling the meeting to order with a quorum present. One member absent. First order of business is approval of the minutes from October 8.
On 5B.
Yep.
There is a typo in the first line. It's a very funny typo.
Redhead.
But it should be reached.
Yes, okay. So we're going to change that to reached rather than redhead. That is very funny. Oh Jen, can you take, keep track of minutes, I mean of motions and votes tonight? Thank you. Okay. Was there anything else that anyone saw?
Move to approve the minutes of October 8, 2025 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further?
Yeah, found a.
Okay.
Nine under the vote. There is an S in my last name.
Where, where are you?
Nine, page three.
Page three. Oh, number nine, okay.
Motion carried by.
Okay, so we gotta.
Made by.
Yeah, so we want to just change that to mods Lee.
I'd say motion made by rather than carried by.
Motion made by.
You don't carry enough.
I amend my motion to say as amended further.
Okay. And Jen, are you okay with that? Any further discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
All right.
I'm going to abstain.
Because you weren't here. Okay, so it's a.
I know, I don't need to, but I'm going to.
Yeah, so it's a 301. Okay, public comment. There's nobody here. Circulation of warrants, we've handled that electronically. Any announcements or correspondence that need to be addressed? All right. Principals' report, off we go.
Hi, here's the principals' report for November 12, 2025. Our enrollment is at 477 students. We had our caregiver conferences last week, November 5 through the 7th. Our fast bridge kindergarten results show that 82% of our kindergarten students are on track to make typical progress this school year in reading. For those students who need support, our reading specialists have added them to their schedules. Many students contributed to Senator Vialliss's Thank a Veteran Project. These are veteran cards, Cards for Veterans. The cards were picked up on Friday. Thank you to sixth grade teacher, Mr. Kevin Hodgson, for organizing this endeavor. We have installed hardwired kid, is it kidda or kitty? Carbon monoxide alarms inside and outside of the boiler room. If the alarm inside the boiler room detects any levels of CO, it will go off and send a signal to the alarm outside the room, which will go off as well. And we also have installed a dedicated outlet near the gas range in the kitchen, which we have plugged in a kidda or kitty gas and carbon monoxide alarm. After we had two incidences where we might have smelled something, we were. We, they're not mandatory, but the fire chief said it's something that you could get and then you'll know right away. So that's what we did. We've finally been able to hire a SLP for preschool. Emily Dunhill will begin next week. Sunday Burke, our grade five math teacher, is having surgery and will be out for a while. Marie Buell, our math, one of our math intervention teachers from last year is going to come back and sub for her for as long as she needs to be out. And then we had a one-year-only paraposition that I had hired last month, and that person had to leave, went to a more permanent position rather than a one-year only. We posted the position, I interviewed for the position, and I offered the position today. So hopefully.
That guy.
It was, yes.
Okay.
Field trips, grade four is going to the Connecticut Science Museum on December 5th, and grade three, the Springfield Science Museum on December 10th. And Michelle Murdock, the Veteran Service Officer here in Southampton, and a fellow veteran, Mark Nichols, came to Norris on Tuesday, November 4th, to make a video with six of our students to be presented at a veteran's service, I believe it was for Veterans Day. The six students chosen were given permission by their caregivers and have family members that were or are in the military. Norris students shared what being a veteran means to them and how we recognize a veteran. Michelle did a coloring and card activity with students, took pictures and gave us, gave each student a thank you gift. The video will be shared with Mrs. Lukasiewicz, and we will forward it to participants' families.
Nice.
Another time, it was really nice that she reached out because we used to do a big Veterans Breakfast, which we haven't been able to do. But it was nice, and the students that were chosen all have family members who are veterans.
Thank you. Any questions for Eliza? Moving on.
Okay, I'd like to bring your attention to, let's see, I guess it's page eight. It's focused on Chapter 70 and the legislature directed, DESI, the Department of Revenue, to conduct a study and review of the local contribution components of Chapter 70. And there's been testimony at the sessions so far. The next session that's coming is Tuesday, November 18th, 4 to 7, and it's virtual.
Okay.
And there's an opportunity to register and weigh in and kind of let them know how we feel, or you feel, about Chapter 70 and its efficacy or not with respect to funding. Dawn attended the Greenfield activity, or event, on November 6th, though I don't think she testified. She.
For me, it was, it was listening to see what others had, if there were any superintendents, school committee members, and some business administrators who spoke. It was, I'm not sure if it's a big deal for being there. And I'm going to work with Vito to add some comments because I think that Chapter 70 is inextricably linked to rural aid and all of these other things. And you can't just look at it in a very.
Isolated fashion.
Isolated fashion. And so many people did say that in a certain way. And I think they were trying to keep it to Chapter 70, but it just can't be. It was amazing, the number of people. It was, it was really. I just felt proud to be from Massachusetts. I felt proud to be from this area. There were people who were so articulate and thoughtful and analytical about everything. There were people who actually took the formula and plugged in their recommendations. It was great.
Yeah. And I also did an exercise. I went on to one of the sites of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and I got access to the testimony to date and downloaded it, shared it with Dawn. So we're going to kind of peruse that and then think about how we want to respond. There's an opportunity to attend this virtual, as I said, on the 18th, but you can also just submit testimony to the link that's, that's shared here. The other, I just shared my draft goals and. Oh, the governance document for the Hampshire Regional District was reviewed by DESI. Michelle Griffin sent a response to us October 21st. I'm back in discussion with Attorney Dupere, and we are going to meet next week or the week after to respond to DESI's input and their questions. And then the next step would be to finalize that document, bring it to the school committee, and then to the towns, because it hasn't been updated in years. And that was one of the charges I received when I was hired. So that work is ongoing. It's been a bit challenging just because of everything else that's happening. But it's, you know, on a parallel track, we've been able to move it forward. So I'm pleased with that.
I think it would be challenging if it was the only thing that you were doing for the next four months. But you'll never be bored.
Never be bored. Absolutely not. But that was, that's all I wanted to bring to your attention. If anybody has any questions, I'm glad to.
That's great. Any questions? All right, Chairs' report. There isn't one. Other than a reminder, I'm pretty sure I forwarded to you all. The town clerk had sent the chairs, and I sent you the open meeting law. So there's a new, as of June 2025, there was a new open meeting law document. So the request is that you read it and sign the acknowledgement, you know, that you've received, read it and received it.
Yeah.
And give it to the town clerk or, you know, just drop it here. This is where it needs to be. I can, if you need to send it to me or give it to me, I can give it to her, but. I read it. It doesn't, I don't know if there were any big changes. They didn't hop out at me, but. Anyway, so that was the request from the town clerk that we take care of doing that. Other than that, there hasn't been a, there hasn't been a Chairs' meeting, so I don't have anything to say about that. So Jen, Hampshire Regional.
So much fun.
Told you.
Um, I apologize for my voice, but. Most of our meeting was about the fact that at the 11th hour, the.
HRVA.
Yeah, HRVA. Their stu, their staff union decided they want to stay in the trust after adamantly telling us that they wanted us to pull out of it and, you know, yada, yada, yada. So there was a lot of conversations about that in an executive session. We also decided to, I can talk about that, right? Because we went into public session with it? The MO.
Yeah, I would focus on what happened after we got out.
Right. So that we agreed to this memorandum. I'm saying that if before the December 1st deadline, they have another insane change of heart, that this memorandum would allow us to jump over some of the legal stuff we needed to, that we could get them in before the December 1st deadline. I don't know, there's a lot of other moving parts, but that was a huge shock to everyone when they came and said that. And then they just talked about the job posting for the position with Dawn, that it was going to be amended and was supposed to be posted. I don't know if it did post last.
Yeah, it was posted.
Yeah. That was about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Jen? Okay, so PTO, that's me. They are, because they would have normally met yesterday, but that was Veterans Day. So the meeting is next week, so I don't have anything to report from PTO. Cool Council, our first meeting is December 2nd.
Yes, and I have two parents that will be joining us. Kim Ischierto, who has a sixth grader and a fourth grader, and Brooke McMahon, who has a first grader. So.
Brooke is new with the council.
I like having that range, yeah.
And then Megan Johnson, kindergarten teacher, has volunteered to serve, so looking forward to it.
Thanks. Collaborative.
They posted a job for the executive position, haven't meet, haven't met since our last meeting.
All right, and our select board rep is not here and did not give me anything to report, so. You're up, Dawn.
I'm happy to report that today will be a very short update. Last, last month, we talked about FY 2025 and where we were with the actuals versus budget. I will report again on that once the town accountant from Southampton and I have finalized the reconciliation. So there's nothing to say about that, nothing new on that one. For FY 25, we did load the budget, but what I wanted, I mean for 26, excuse me, for FY 26, in your packet, you will see the budget. I don't want you to spend too much time looking at it other than the following. I want to say that it's good to have the budget in, and there are a couple of things that are going on parallel tracks. So in addition to putting the budget in, we're looking at the chart of accounts, which means where the accounts are in relation to end-of-year reporting that we do for DESI, et cetera. And so when you do go through these, when you see account codes that have little asterisks on them, for example, neurodiversity program teachers, assistant principal asterisk, and then throughout here, you'll see various asterisks. Those are new lines, and some of the old lines haven't been removed yet. We have to go about it in a certain way. And so amounts are being charged, the old lines, they have to be moved to the new ones. So if you were to look, let's just say, the principal professional, you'll see zero in the budget, but there's a, there's an amount of $49,000 that's been spent. That $49,000 has to come down to the principal line, two lines below that. So you'll see like principal professional, it's in capital letters. Then you'll see principal with a little asterisk next to it. That's the new line. That's where everything's going to settle. But it hasn't settled there yet. We wanted to put the budget in where it belonged because it will only highlight the things that we need to move. So we will be moving those, and as that gets cleaned up, I will send it to you before the next meeting, if it gets cleaned up before the next meeting, and I anticipate that it will. But other than that, it would be sort of useless to go through the analysis because you can't compare budget to actual, but you will be able to shortly. So that's the situation there. And then in terms of a general update, I wanted to thank you and the rest of the committees for moving forward with the job description, which we have posted, and we're getting some resumes for that. And then in addition to that, we have an opportunity to fill another position because the Assistant Business Administrator, who's been here for three months, provided his.
Resign.
Resignation on Friday, effective Friday. So that gives us an opportunity to fill both positions. And it's going to be a bit of a stretch trying to get everything done between now and then, but we just continue to do the best we can. And we actually are seeing this overall as a positive.
Thank you.
Enough said on that.
Okay.
And that's it. Does anybody have any questions so far? And I have been working with Margaret on.
Other stuff.
The other things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
As always.
Yes. Can I even just tell you how nice it is to have a budget document? Like, it's just, no, sincere, like, I'm, that's like.
I'm laughing because it makes me so happy.
It's sarcastic. I like, this is like, it's genuinely like giddy. Like, thank you so much for that.
Well, it's, it's better than there is money and how much. Don't know.
We don't know where it is. We don't know how much.
Is it enough?
Yeah.
Probably not.
So, thank you for that. True, really and truly, we're laughing, but truly, it's heartfelt. Thank you so much. Okay, policy work. We've got a couple of second reads and a possible first read. I'm not quite sure how we're handling something yet, but we'll talk about it. So we have two second reads. We've got on page 11, EFE, the Civil Rights Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs. So the only thing we were changing was the part in green that says the superintendent. Everything else, that was the only, that was the only change, so. Is there any?
Wait, which one were you on?
EFE, page 11.
Okay, I went too far. Okay, got it.
So, just to be difficult.
That's okay.
I'm going to move that we approve EFE.
Okay.
And then we can move on to the other ones after, because.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's what I thought we'd do.
Oh, okay. I said, no, there's two second reads. I don't know if you want to do it.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. So Dylan made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, 4 to 0. All right, so now we have JQ, the student fees, fines, and charges. This is also a second read. There is the part in yellow that I'm not sure. So all the strike-throughs were just things we didn't need. Margaret, you can, you're the one who did all the hard work on this. Can you?
Yeah, the strike-throughs were things we didn't need. I mean, you guys read this.
We did read it last time, but.
And what was decided about the question I had in the yellow part? When a student has a balance due of 25 or more, note a fee.
There was no decision made.
Okay.
So.
Can we make a decision on that?
Yep, that's, that's what we're going to do. So what do we currently do, Eliza?
When there's a balance due.
And are you talking about lunch?
Yeah.
As well? Okay. We've been trying to be really good about, just, I just made a phone call, you know, hey, I don't know if you saw the letter that came home, but your child has a charge of, you know, has $15 on their account that's due. So I think somewhere else it says kids are not supposed to be able to charge à la carte if they have a balance. But I think it's also hard when a student wants à la carte, and you're not going to tell them no in front of their peers, right? So I've just been trying to like stay up on it, ask the cafeteria manager who has an outstanding balance and sort of go to the parent and say.
All right.
And they've been paying it. There's no trigger of like $25.
No.
In here. So if we're not doing it, I would say delete it.
But what about, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I, I agree with you. If we're not doing it, we should delete it. But there's also, if at the top, this is also, it's about, like if they lose, if they, you know, if they're paying for any kind of supplies or equipment, or if they've lost or damaged anything. Is, like, do they just get, do the families, do families pay for those things?
We have, many families have taken, the kids that have, we haven't had any issues with anything other than computers at this point.
Okay.
And we've been lucky enough that I think all of the families whose child or children have broken a computer by accident or whatever, have taken out the insurance. So we have recouped the money right away.
Okay.
I'm not sure, you know, if that's 100%.
Okay.
What if a kid loses a library book?
Last year, we had 100% of the library books brought back. But in the past, we call, and we call, and we call, and we call.
Okay, okay. All right, so you want.
And the parents are pretty good about it.
Yeah, if there's no trigger point, like if, if. The one thing. We might just say that when a student.
Well, it's just.
Has an existing balance or.
It's in the prior policy. Notice that we sent home demanding immediate payment. It's $25 or more, so.
We could keep it because at least that would be a trigger, right? We were not going to let anyone get over $25.
That's fine.
Before you're going to start calling.
If that's actually going to happen.
That's fine.
Yeah, so I think, I think the question is, if we're going to put it in the policy, then it has to happen. So that if they do owe $25 or more, that trigger is actually going to trigger something that happens.
And it could be less than that, too, but for sure.
I'm trying to keep on it.
Okay.
The only other thing is a fee or charge due to the Hampshire Regional School District.
Well, that is my other question.
Right.
It should say Southampton School District, not Hampshire Regional.
That is not paid at the end of the school year.
It's the Hampshire School District, maybe the R is not correct because it is, it's not due the school, it's due the district. That's what, that's what we discussed.
What's, what, what is owed to the, no, we are the district. The district is Southampton School District.
Okay, that's fine.
School District's our school.
That's fine. This was, this was, I took this from another one I found, so.
All right, so do we want to just.
Not the Hampshire one either.
Do we want to just say Southampton Public Schools?
Southampton School District.
Southampton School District, all right.
We are a school district.
Well, if you read the rest of it, "As such debts are considered to be debts to the school district"
Correct.
"and not to an individual school." So I think that I got.
But we are the.
We are the Southampton School District. And our only, and our school is the William and Nora School. We only have one. I mean, it's a classic.
But if we.
Do we allow us?
Okay, that was advocate. If they owe money at the end of their sixth grade year.
Yes.
Then it goes, it follows them to the district, which is the high school. So that was, I got this from Vito, I believe.
That, that was the issue. I think that our cafeteria manager brought this to light at some point, that there are students, you know, from all the schools, all the elementary schools, who do transition into the high school, and they will often carry a balance owed. And so I think what that balance owed then becomes Hampshire Regional's.
Shouldn't, because.
It shouldn't though.
We have our own revolving account for our funding. We get our own funding directly into Southampton for the school lunch program. It comes to the town, not to the district. And we don't have a central account that all school money, that all funding comes out of. And additionally, this is not just school fees, this is all fees and fines. So if a kid breaks a locker, it's not, Hampshire doesn't get that money.
All right, Dylan, how do you propose we write this so that it, it is clear how it impacts not only students continuing their education at Norris, but also students going to the high school?
Balances should not be carried, that we shouldn't be carrying balances forward to Hampshire Regional. That's what the answer is.
Okay.
Because we are not part of Hampshire.
Okay, we already answered that. The question is, how do we write it so that at the end of.
Sixth grade.
Their sixth grade, it would carry to the next year, but we still have to get the money back. Right?
Would it carry to?
It shouldn't carry to the next year.
Well, no, it continues on forever just because you, you know, it's like any debt owed, it's still owed to the Southampton School District, whether or not, but it's a, you don't pay, so if you owe us a debt in sixth grade for $150.
So we just cross out the second, the last, after the last comma. "As such debts are considered to be blah blah." So we say it's not paid at the end of the school year will be carried forward to the next succeeding school year, period.
I don't think you have to, because the school district is Southampton. So it's redundant in the sense of, because if we had two elementary schools.
No, no, no. So it would read, "Any fee or charge due Southampton Public Schools that is not paid at the end of the school year will be carried forward to the next succeeding school year," period, period.
Because.
Because that is what would happen.
Even like from second to third grade, they have a mention, they put a caveat that.
But. All fees must be paid before moving on.
But there's no enforcement, there's no enforcement. I understand what you're saying. Did you pull this language from a, from a, where'd that language come from? Is that from an MASC policy?
That came from Vito.
Could you say all fees must be collected, will be collected through Southampton Schools?
So I think what, where we are right now, I think, is it's going to say, "Any fee or charge due the Southampton School District that is not paid at the end of the school year will be carried forward to the next succeeding school year," period.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Until we build another school. And then we'll have to add that in there.
Okay, then.
Killing me.
All right, so we're leaving in the $25 thing, right? Up at the, the part in yellow, we decided to keep that in? Is that what we decided?
Yep.
Okay, but we're, so the only thing we have to edit is taking out this, the thing about.
Yep.
Keep or delete.
Of that, yep.
All right. Okay. All right, so now, is there a motion? We do, we didn't have a motion on this, right? Is there a motion?
I approve this policy with the edits that we made this evening.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries 4 to 0. All right, next up. All right, so we could stop work on the wellness policy because the last time we talked about it, we were concerned about how the policy felt aspirational rather than something that we could actually. So what you have in the packet is a wellness policy that is taken down to the essentials that are required by law. So, let me read to you. So this, this came from the district nurse leader. And the note that came to, says. Okay, so this is the new draft that will be presented for school committee review. It contains only the state and federal mandated items that we must include in the wellness policy. While this document contains only the mandated items, and those items included cannot be removed, the language used around the items can be adjusted accordingly as needed as long as it does not change the integrity of the mandated information. So, we can either call this, we can do a first read on this tonight and do a second read in December, or we can call this, here's an update on where we work in the wellness policy, and we can do a first read next month and a second read in January.
I'd prefer that.
The other thing, that it's not in the packet because it's not something we have to take action on, what they also did, it is in our, it is in our electronic folder. They also created a wellness policy goals. Like a lot of that stuff that we knew we couldn't do right now. So the aspirational stuff is in that document, it's in the electronic folder. I didn't have it printed for tonight because it's not something we have to take action on. So I guess my question is, do you all want to do a first read on this tonight? If you've had time to look at it already and can talk about it, or do you want to do the first read next month?
Why do, what would be the, what would be the detriment of not making it a first read?
After having such concerns with the first one, I'd like to be able to like thoroughly go through it and see what it says.
Well, if we, but you don't have to do an up and down vote at the next, if we call this a first read and we come back and you have serious concerns.
Yep.
We don't have to take a final vote at the second read.
Okay.
We can continue. My concern is, I mean, I.
Just to move it along.
Just to move along. And if we decide we want to scrap it, we can scrap the whole thing.
Gotcha, okay.
So this is tonight, yeah, this, this does, this isn't like any final, this is. And, and so also, just so you know, the two policies that we just approved and this policy, they were all also included as attachments to the meeting posting.
Great.
These have been put out to the public as well.
Oh, nice.
Okay. All right, well, Margaret, okay, so you want to call this off, you want to do a first read on this?
I don't see a detriment to doing that.
That's, that's completely fine with me. I just wanted to put it out there that we had options.
Yep.
14 first reads.
That's weird. We could.
Yeah, that, I see, but that's fine. I didn't, I just feel like we usually do a first read, we do a second read, we vote. So that's fine as long as.
We can, we can.
Yeah.
I mean, in theory, because if you do make any changes, we'd have to do another read again anyway because you're only allowed de minimis changes in order to accept it as a second read, because if you make any changes, you can repost it.
So what we can call it a first read. So what we can call it a first read, so, do anybody want to say you can
So speak it to the attorney.
So is there any, so, does anybody want to say anything then?
Yeah, only if we can get to promote free, I don't know what a free safe is.
Where are you? Where are you?
Under, on page two, standards, bullet point four, to promote hydration, because I don't
Hydr, free, comma, safe.
Free, comma, safe.
Yes, okay.
Free safe.
Free safe. Maybe it's a new thing, Dylan, and we're just not hip to it.
And I just don't know how kids, I, we must all have been hydrated, because I never had it.
I think we were.
Ironically dehydrated.
Probably were.
Ironically dehydrated.
Yeah, yeah, I feel like my kids' generation is the most hydrated group of people on the planet. Okay.
They've only added the, these, these things are love-free stickers to them, you know, we're like, oh. They're not free for
All right, are we, so
Cafeteria now.
All right, so we're moving on, or are we going to do anything with this? Like, do we have to, do we, do we have to do the whole, accept this as a first read thing, or just say that was our first read? Okay, good. All right, Jen?
Yes.
Why isn't that in here? All right, so I had requested that everything that was in the folder be in here. And it's not, because all of the wellness, all of the cell phone policy work that you did is not here.
All right, I'll talk about it anyway.
All right, so Jen, she doesn't have, so
I don't have a formal policy.
Okay.
Mostly because I was dealing with a bunch of crap between sick kids and going on vacation. But prior to even becoming part of the, like, officially on the committee, when coming to the meetings, and I remember Margaret started talking about when they started the yonder pouch stuff up at Hampshire. I was like, oh, that's a good idea, because we, I know there is a problem with cell phones at Norris. Not like a huge, like, issue, but I know there are kids that are using them in the bathrooms and, you know, stuff like that, stuff that shouldn't be happening. So at that time, I went through and started making a list. I also read the book, The Anxious Generation, which was kind of an eye-opening approach to the whole social media and electronic technology in general. This year, the Mass General Law, the Senate has approved, which, I don't see if I can pull up, and on my phone, but they approved, or are trying to get this whole bell-to-bell thing for cell phones in all schools in Massachusetts, and
I swear to God I put it in the folder. All right, if it's not there, then I, maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't make this
I haven't seen anything.
It's not in here, I'm looking right now, it's not in there.
My apologies to you all, I will put it, I will put it in the folder tomorrow.
So just some of the points that I pulled out from a couple years ago, and then I pulled policies, I went on the Mass, or whatever, or website, that we can look at policies
In MASC.
Yeah, and looked at policies for schools currently that have cell phone policies. What was I looking at? So Salem Public Schools, I'll buy where we grew up, has a K-8 cell phone policy for safety reasons. They must be kept off, stored, and then they have like a three-step, like, three-tier, or first step, second step, third step, for kids violating the policy. I don't think, like, closer to us, Lee Elementary School has one, and then I included, you'll see, you guys can read, what the Mass General Law, the bill currently is Bill S. 323. I mean, I'm all for it at this point, there is zero need for anyone in a K-6 school, pre-K-6 school, to have a cell phone, with the caveat of, I know there are some students with type 1 diabetes and other medical issues that use them for, you know, monitoring. So obviously, I want to make, didn't want to go whole hog and write a full policy on it without having input from all of you, because I want to make sure that that is represented appropriately, or if there is any other outstanding circumstances in which any of you feel, you, Vito and Eliza included, that would warrant having a cell phone be accessible during the day.
So you're going to continue working on it?
I am, I, but I just wanted to know if the input that any of you had before I went whole hog, because there aren't any, like, general Mass, MASC, like, policies to pull from, to say, here's what it is, because the bell-to-bell hasn't passed the House yet.
Right. Yeah, the only other, the only reason, like, at the high school when we wrote it, if someone is on IEP and needs to take a photo of the board, for example, for homework, there are instances where students are allowed to do that. At an elementary school, the medical reason seems primary, I don't know about other uses.
I think what I would like is for you to get with Eliza and Vito and get their input, because I feel like they're like, you know, you're the person, you're the person who's actually in the building, and you're our leader, right? So I think that getting input from them would be really helpful. And I also think that, you know, once we have a policy that we want to start talking about, we'll do what we did, and we'll, we'll include it as an attachment to the meeting posting and stuff like that, because I think that it's probably something that we'll hear from the public about if we, you know, if we proceed with anything, and I think we need, you know, people need to know what it is that we're going to be talking about at a meeting.
As a separate point, or with this point, should it be just a cell phone, or should it be a cell phone slash technology policy? Because I'm curious about the stipulations, like, when we give the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders computers.
Well, that's why working with administration
Right, like, what are the limits that are put on those? Like, as far as
Yeah, cell phones, watches, earbuds.
Well, no, watches, but I'm saying, more so for the computer access, when the kids get those, like, when they can bring them home and can be doing whatever, I mean, I know they're on Google and searching for a bunch of crap, like, do we have strict, I don't know, firewalls or, or firewalls or whatever that keep them from being able to get to anything on YouTube?
Uh, not the firewall when you're at home, all right?
Do you know what I mean? Like, is it a computer thing, or is it just a internet while-in-the-school thing? Do you know what I mean? I'm just curious, I don't know.
I think it might be useful, too, so if we're talking about more than cell phones, if we're talking about other types of technology, and acceptable use and all that, it would probably be good to have a handle on what is being used in classrooms, like, what are, what are teachers
The teachers are not asking kids to use their cell phones at all in class. I mean, it's always been, often a way, it's in our handbook.
Right.
So we, there may be issues with a kid leaving their homeroom, going to their locker, grabbing their cell phone, and using it in the bathroom. I don't know who they're talking to, because nobody else has their cell phone, but to my knowledge, we haven't had any disciplinary issues on that, but it's, I'm not saying that it could ever happen.
Right.
But I think that, how much weight does a handbook, you know, if it comes to something, a policy would be good to have enough to back us up, so
Well, it's better to have the policy in place before we need it than to really wish we had a policy.
Right, I think the bigger issue is when kids have their cell phones and they get on the bus. That's what we've had issues with, is kids taking pictures of other kids on the bus, or they're getting on the Snapchat or the social media while they're on the bus to other kids, or, you know
Are we allowed to extend to the bus ride?
I mean, I don't know, you know.
As far as our policy?
I think
The bus is If there's a fight on the bus, it's
It's still, yeah.
We have a bus policy, too, in progressive discipline for buses and fractions on that bus, so we could include, sorry, we could absolutely look at the bus policy as part of this, too, and whether we want
Discipline should not be in a policy, discipline should be in a handbook. A policy should govern the approach or the rule, and then the consequences should be in the handbook.
So the consequences
Is what a policy is for.
So the consequences for not following the policy.
Right.
Yes, yeah. So I also think, one of the, the, part of the reason we started talking about this was because of an email that we got from a member of the public, and their concern wasn't just about cell phones, it was also about social media platforms, different platforms that, that might be being used in school.
Yep.
There weren't any specific ones named, but just about generally the use of social media platforms in school. So I think that this is a thing where, it's probably a lot of conversation and research that, that, you know, if you're, if you're still willing to take it on, that the three of you would work on together, and this might be the kind of thing that we do, you might do pieces of it, because it's probably a good reason to have separate policies for different, like, content areas, right?
Yep.
And probably, we'd be in a situation where we'd be trying to get this up and running for the start of the coming school year.
Right.
So that gives you time to, to, to get it put together.